Regular Board Education Meeting for Monday, March 4th, March 10th, 2025. Please stand for the Plenary Agents.
And we have Chris Turey.
Yeah.
Javon Clark.
Chad Todd Harris.
Matt Law.
Vanessa Jenkins.
Presenting.
And Valdez.
Joel Anderson.
And Lenny Mendez.
And we have our student parts. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We have no amendments to the agenda this evening. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve our regular Board Education Meeting Minutes for February 10th, 2025? Have a motion and second. All in favor? Votes, discussions. Ayes, ayes. Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve our Special Board Education Meeting Minutes for February 12th, 2025? Do you have a second? All in favor? Votes, discussions. Ayes, ayes. Thank you. Are there... Oh, do I have a motion to approve our Special Board Education Meeting Minutes for February 26th, 2025? Motion and second. All in favor? Votes, discussions. Ayes, ayes. Or we have a discussion action item for our previous minutes.
So I just have a question with regards to the previous minutes for the February 26th. I think that was the budget, the joint meeting. In the minutes, it says attended, none, and I'm not sure what that means. And also, I do not see Javon's name anywhere on here, so I don't know if we need to break that. Okay.
So bring those Javon's name into the non-part. Alright, thank you for making those edits. Are there any written communications to board?
Yes, the only thing is we want to encourage parents to register their kids for kindergarten. It's coming up soon, so please do so.
Alright, thank you for that, Secretary. And now our student representative, Savannah, come on down. Our Super Representative.
Good evening, everyone. During the past month and upcoming in this month, the Student Advisory Board took a field trip to the Connecticut Association of Student Councils Annual Convention at Woodland High School. Ms. Buck was awarded with an Excellence and Advising Award for her work with amazing service and leadership within our school councils. Students had the opportunity to work with like-minded high school students in service and leadership workshops. The China Club held their first Chinese Games afternoon on March 7th. Students participated in different cultural activities after school to help support the trip to China in 2026. SAT prep sessions have begun and will continue throughout March, ending with the cram jam on April 1st. Over 25 students have participated in the after-school sessions thus far. There will be an informational meeting for the China trip planned for spring of 2026 with East Hartford High School and Siva students. Parents will be able to come and ask questions about the trip, as well as learn about the payment schedule and itinerary. This will be on March 12th at 6:00 PM if anyone's interested. The Interact Club is hosting an Asian Cultural Night at 6:00 PM on March 21st. Students will be able to engage in different activities from around Asia, and there will be catered food that is included with the entrance fee. Another wellness clinic will be held on March 28th, and we will be hosting a badminton clinic and helping our students stay active beyond their physical education class requirements. On March 22nd, our biomedical club will be participating in a biomedical competition at Yukon. Fifty of our students will be competing against other schools to win different challenges in physics, chemistry, biology, and more. That is all I have for you guys today.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Savannah? Aaron, none. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak out this time? Savannah, turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Thomas Anderson.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's been a long day. It's been much warmer outside, so we should be a little bit proud of that here in March. First one I want to do is, and we're here at Sunset Ridge Middle School, I'm going to invite this Turner Assistant Principal to just give us some greetings and share a little bit about Sunset Ridge.
And I am really loud.
Alright, good evening. It is my pleasure to welcome the Board of Education to Sunset Ridge Middle School. We're happy to host you here tonight. My name is Alex Turner. I'm the Assistant Principal and the IB Coordinator here at Sunset. So at Sunset, our mission is clear. We strive to promote academic excellence and social development through the IB learner profile. We offer rigorous, student-centered learning experiences that prepare our students for a rapidly changing world. We take pride in fostering international-mindedness by encouraging our students to consider diverse perspectives and empowering them to make a difference in the world through service and action. Trust me, it is no small feat to convince a middle schooler that there is in fact a world outside of themselves. So together with your support, we are really creating a community here at this school that not only values education, but seeks to inspire students to be compassionate, thoughtful, and engaged global citizens. So thank you for your continued dedication to this program. This is a huge part of, you know, what you have believed in and continue to support, and we're excited to continue developing our program. I'll share anecdotal funny story with you. About two weeks ago, I had a seventh-grade student come up to me and say, "Ms. Turner, we need to talk." And I said, "Okay, that could go a lot of different directions, right?" And they said, "Do you guys remember, we're only 12? I'm going to my math class, and I'm asked to do all this really hard stuff, and the teacher's not telling me the answer. I have to communicate with the people next to me and work it out with this group of kids. The math is so hard." And then I go to community time, and you expect me to change the world? And so it was really hilarious to hear a 12-year-old's perspective of what we do here. But in a nutshell, he was able to protest, but also you could see that he liked it, kind of encapsulate what we do and what we believe in. And so, you know, our students are really challenged at Sunset, and we are so amazed at how they rise to the occasion time and time again. In May, you'll all receive an invitation to this very cafeteria, and it will look much different than it looks right now. The students will present their, we call it our IB showcase. They'll present their community projects that they've worked on all year, our eighth-grade students. And it's a very big day for them, so we hope you'll be able to attend and see what impact the students chose to make in our community and beyond. So I'm not sure if anyone had any questions about the IB program or anything that you wanted to know. No, I did such a great job encapsulating it all that you really get what Sunset's about. That's good. Okay, well, I thank you for being here tonight and hope you have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. So as we get to some of the other key points, I think it's always important, and being able to be in the schools physically and see what happened here and have administrators or staff from the building to be able to show. I think that speaks volumes about what is actually occurring versus us just sharing short pictures and those type of things. So thank you again. So again, always sharing what our goals are, I think it's important for us to kind of stay focused on that. You're welcome. Some key agenda items that we will cover this evening. But the next item is, we have several of our student athletes here, and I'm going to invite up our Athletic Director, Mr. St. Juice. Come up and do some speaking introductions.
Oh, brief.
You know, because I've got to make sure you're on screen.
Alright. My introduction's going to be very brief. I'm going to bring over our indoor and outdoor track coach, Mark Brown, Coach Brown. He has his assistants here with him, Coach Roth and Coach Jay. So Coach Brown will give a brief overview of these fine young athletes we've had. Coach Brown's been with us for longer than I've been there, over 15-plus years. And he's been coaching track for a long time. And track is one of those tricky sports. I really didn't start getting it till this year probably, and I'm still learning it. It's just the time that you commit to track is ridiculous, right? Sometimes a track meet starts at 6:00 AM, you leave the school, and then I'm back till 11 o'clock at night. So that's a long Saturday. I don't think any of us worked that long at any given moment. So I'm going to stop talking and bring Coach Brown up so he can do the introductions.
Good evening. How everybody doing today? My name is Coach Brown, Coach over at East Hartford High School. I've been an employee for East Hartford for over 28 years now. One of the main things I'd like to talk about with first individual that I'd like to introduce to you guys is this gentleman came to us his freshman year. He started running track, and he was coached, he was on the Tulwich. This Coach Jay, our Turner Coach, came to us from Yukon. And he really kind of bought into our program and did everything that we asked him to do. His freshman year, he accomplished great things. He went to Nationals, and he placed eighth overall in the nation as a freshman, which was a great task, and we didn't have, we never had something like that at East Hartford. He was the first one to actually do it. Now it's his junior year. He's now currently ranked number one in the Class Double L, which is a large school, high schools in Connecticut. He's number one in that. He's also ranked number one in the state of Connecticut, and he's currently ranked number 50 in the nation in the 55-meter hurdles. I'd like to bring up Mr. Davion Johnson. The other individual, I'm going to let her coach, who put a lot of work in. She's been with us for two years, but I'm going to let her coach. He's very, very proud of her. Introduce her. So this young lady, she's... I just found out she was with the program for three years. And she started as a runner, and everybody tried to push her in my direction, but she wanted to jump, she wanted to do everything, but throw. And she came to me for junior year, and she just worked relentlessly. And outdoor didn't go where she wanted, and she just put indoor. Her first outdoor season, she became a state champion. And then she came back, this is her second indoor season, now she's a state champion again. She's again number one in the Low, number two in Connecticut, and she's number 32 in the country. So this is, you know, a testament to her hard work and her dedication, so. I just wanted to present to you guys, Brianna Rose. On top of that, she also boasts a 4.1 GPA at Siva in addition to all the hard work that she does. So she's the perfect example of what a student should be.
We definitely appreciate our student athletes being able to attend tonight, but I guess when we really look at how we balance the athletics along with being a student. I think some people forget that sometimes, that the focus is about being a student athlete. And it's a testament to several years of work throughout a strong athletic tradition in East Hartford. And so what they continue to do is just, you know, it's amazing to have the national rankings that they have. And the next group that we, I believe that, I was just told that they had a meet this past weekend. So our wrestlers, who actually won again, I believe that's five, that's their five Class Double L championships this year. They also won five championships last year. And Mrs. St. Juice said that they had a meet, so we appreciate that. They probably need to be home resting up, studying, because again, it is the student part of the athlete that we want to make sure that they're taking care of their other business. But we did want to recognize those young men as well, because these are, again, the time and energy that is spent. I think some individuals may not have an appreciation for just the amount of balance when you're doing any type of extracurricular combined with doing well in the classroom. So again, we appreciate them and giving them recognition, and, you know, we'll give them touch base with them at another time. Next part is, as always, we want to do our staff spotlight. So our first one is Stacy Porch, Assistant Principal at East Hartford High School. And we had had administrators recognized before, and there was a question. And my thought was whoever we feel is deserving to be recognized, that's what we should do. We shouldn't hold back because it's an administrator and not someone else in the building. So I think Stacy's probably our first administrator.
I'm Stacy Porch. I am the Grade 11 Assistant Principal at East Hartford High School. I taught English here for about 18 years, and then I was asked to step in as an AP and an interim role for a year. Then I got the job for real at the end of my 19th year here, and I've been doing this for five years now. It's always different, and I think that's what makes it so exciting. You know, the days are never the same, so you just got to kind of move and pivot and change direction and do what you need to do to meet the needs of the kids.
Stacy's commitment to the horrid community is unrivaled. She comes in here, she's the first one here every day. And when she's here, she's building strong supportive relationships. She builds those relationships with students as well as our staff members. She's not afraid to have difficult conversations, and she can do those because she has great relationships with our students and our staff and our families.
We go with the kids from 9 through 12. So it really helps kind of knowing what's going on in their lives and knowing their stories. I use a lot of humor, a lot of sarcasm with the kids. They like to be able to have somebody here that they can kind of be real with and talk to, but at the same time, hold them accountable. I just feel like, you know, somehow I'm making a difference. You know, and it might just be in one kid or two kids, but, you know, I want the kids to look back on our high school experience and say, "Ah, it wasn't so bad." You know, "I remember my AP." I didn't ever remember who my APs were, you know? They were just kind of people that were there, you heard of, but you never saw. So I make sure I'm out there, I'm visible, and you know I am.
Good. We appreciate this Porch. And our next...
So the topic about which I'm going to speak.
Good morning, Olivia. Come on in.
My name is Javier, I'm the administrative assistant here at Mayberry Elementary School. I've been in the role a couple of years, and it's been a blast. I started as a tutor, and I would cover for the secretary when she was at her lunch, because I speak Spanish, so they thought it would be a nice addition to have. And I just really like the role. So typical day is dealing with attendance, scheduling for the principal, you know, coverage, making sure just the day-to-day things like the printer, and everything is working fine for the teachers. Anything that the principal needs, anything that the teachers need, we are that, you know, that resource that can say, like, "I don't know who can help him with this. Well, that's where we can step in. We can find out."
I can obviously say the school does not function properly without him. He knows the in and outs of this school like the back of his hand. The relationships he has with teachers, with the students, with the staff are amazing.
It's nice to be able to step into a place where it feels safe, it feels welcoming, and that's what we try to have here for families. And part of that is being friendly and being happy and being, you know, bringing a little joy.
He has the ability to calm parents down and talk to them and make them feel heard and validated, and then he gets all the answers, and he won't stop until he helps them.
The look in someone's face when they realize that something that they really worried about, something that stressed them out, that now is no longer a problem, you know? That, to me, is a nice feeling.
Thank you. We think it's important every meeting to recognize them. We really do other things throughout, so it just doesn't seem as though it's just something that we do. I appreciate again Laura Roberts for being, taking the time to put these together, putting, you know, the time and actually the care into it, because these are the people that make our school system, you know, what it is. And I think it's very important to make sure that we continue recognizing and knowing that there's meaning behind it versus just an activity and being able to do that. We're going to get to the Healthy Food Certification a little bit later. That's another agenda item. So I want to touch on a couple of other things as we're doing a lot of work with. So we think about AI, artificial intelligence. We have to think about what comes to mind and what makes people a little fearful of what is transpiring in our world when it comes to the technology. So we are one of seven districts that was selected in Connecticut to be a part of the AI pilot by the Department of Education. And we will be underway in terms of being able to pilot a couple of tools at the middle school level and at the high school level. What I wanted to do this evening is just to just share a little bit about, not so much about where we are, but what we're doing in terms of recognizing, implementing what are going to be our, you know, our rules and regulations basically about how it goes. We have an AI committee that meets, and they're digging deeply into how we're going to implement the pilot, how we're going to do some of those things. But also, what is it that we need to do? We know this is an area that continues to, continues to evolve, so we're not looking to create a concrete statement or policy at the moment, because every couple of months, there's something new coming out. What are the tools? What are the platforms that we're going to use? All staff and students already signed off on a user agreement to have access or utilize the school's computers as hardware, but also for any software. So some of those things are already in place, but just really being able to share, you know, a few points about what it is that we're trying to do. You know, we talk about being here at Sunset Ridge, and we talk about the IB profile and all the different adjectives that are used. But really thinking about, we want to be able to use this being intentional with, you know, the educational part, skill development, and, you know, we want our students to be more of the creators versus being on the side and having other people create the processes, and we're not ready. And that's a huge thing for me, what I mentioned before about social capital and having our students be the drivers of it as opposed to going to be the bystanders. So as we're out in front of this, taking advantage, the pilot comes with about $100,000 to pay for any of the tools that we're going to use as part of that pilot. But again, like I said, understanding what the role is of AI. So when we come up with our statement of purpose, we are listing which tools can be used, like for example, ChatGPT. So that'll be something that once we go through, finalize our position statement, share that with all the administrators. They've already given feedback. So it is today, Monday, on Wednesday, we have a district leadership team meeting where we will share the final document that's already had feedback to kind of see where we are with that. But again, like I said, it's pretty fluid to make sure we can make those changes, make those changes throughout. But really getting it where, I was on a panel, I guess it's almost a little, a week ago now, but talking about how AI impacts certain communities and those type of things. And it's where, who has the access, and that's what it comes down to. Who has access in the beginning? How are we making sure that things are ethical? What are the privacy laws that we've implemented? Put it this way, we didn't have to implement privacy because we already have it. So what we need to do is expanding it and making sure it's capturing that the information that is being put into the AI system, no matter what the tool is, is not going to violate any of our students' rights or our staff being able to share information that shouldn't be shared. So we're capturing all of those pieces. And again, you know, the strategic collaboration, there being equity focus in terms of what's equitable for everyone. Another area of focus is to partner with a lot of the tech companies, the colleges, universities. So those are the things that are coming to make sure that we are well-equipped. We don't know what we should be teaching for some students to learn how to really code or create and develop the AI program. So those are areas where we need to be out in front of it and get with our workforce development partners, seeing what the colleges and universities are doing, seeing what from a technical standpoint, some of the other non-colleges are doing about this part of the process. And also, we think about advocating for making sure that, my main concern is our East Hartford community. And how are we being equipped? So we have the hardware, but again, what does it come down to as far as understanding the mindset and getting us all on the same page about what is it that we want to do with, you know, AI, artificial intelligence, and how it can be used as a tool? And just one last point about it is, I think in the beginning, individuals think that, "Well, we can't use XYZ because students are going to cheat." My thought is, well, let's channel that and switch it around so that way they know how to use it effectively. So the level of communication is there, so it's not something that's being seen as where they're not supposed to use it. And we know, I've heard it on the news today, and everyone's celebrating in some communities about, "Today was the first day that middle school students in some places had to put their phones in their pouches, and they didn't have access to them during the day." And my thought is, okay, that's one way of handling it, but we need to embrace the technology and figure out ways of how we make sure individuals know this is not the appropriate time, but in this classroom during this assignment, this is what you're going to be able to do. This is what we're going to dictate that you have to do. And so as we're thinking about AI, it's really the same thing. So as long as we have an open mind and we're willing to dig into the space and really see what's there, then we will stay out in front of it. So what we will be doing, like I said, we'll share a position statement. We'll finalize it, do all these things with the rest of our administrators on Wednesday. So there's about 60 people that will have to put on it because it's going to impact the schools immediately. And the next step we want to be able to do over the next few days is open up some of those tools so our teachers and other staff will have access to them. And that's what it's about first. It's about giving the teachers the access to kind of see what they can use the tools for, to expedite time, to be creative. And then we'll pull the students in to see, okay, the teachers need it for this. Then we know exactly what those rules and those parameters need to be to make sure that it is, you know, equitable access for everyone. I know that was a lot, but I kind of wanted to just put some of that out there. Any questions?
So just curious in regards to the AI, so the first phase, that kind of phase is only for teachers?
So, and the question was this case is the first phase, the pilot for the teachers. So ask it, well, yes and no, but it will be used with students in the classroom?
And then my second question to that is, are you guys going to allow teachers the freedom to use AI to develop, to help support curriculum, assessments, lesson plans? Have you guys had to do some discussions?
So also, we plan to use it to allow teachers to dig deeply into creating curriculum, writing lessons, and those type of things and assessments. So what we're doing with the pilot is to determine what it is that we should use it for. So I don't want to say, "No, we're not going to," because I think when we have individuals who are probably using it at home already to help them be creative and do some of those things, exactly. So it's really about making sure the security, so we think of an assessment, making sure the test security is there and how all those pieces work. And I think over the next couple of months, I'll be able to share more and more. Once they've started implementing it and really see... And I think over the next couple of months, I'll be able to share more and more, once, once they've started implementing it and really seeing what direction they feel they need in the classroom.
Part of the pilot is student engagement, is that part of, yeah, feedback?
Yes. So part, of course it is, is part of the pilot to get student engagement and feedback or get feedback from students during that part of the process. Yes, that, that's really what the driver will be. It'll be the teachers in the classroom, but it's going to come from the students as far as what are the needs that they have. Because that's really what we're talking about revising curriculum, we're creating curriculum. It really is all based on what we think the students need at that time. And like I said, we'll be giving more updates and in the future I will have some other teammates discussing and sharing more of the details as well. So what I want to do now, just quickly, I, I share a lot about our learning walks. And so this is just to kind of give a few highlights, some of the information that, that is there. And again, it's a team, it's a little bit different than it happened in the past. So the learning walk really touches on all aspects of the districts. You have someone representing the English language learner department, justice education, social studies math across the board. There's a team that will go in. So for example, if we come into Sunset, you could end up having as many as eighteen different individuals broken up into smaller teams. The object, when we think of it in a, in a simple way, it's almost like having an audit done of your building. So we had this team be able to come in and depending upon the number of teams, you could end up seeing almost every classroom in the building. With that, so each, each visit lasts about five to seven minutes, which in the grand scheme of things, you can think, that may not be that long of a time. But when you're in there and you're making, looking at trends and patterns, there's a lot you can see during that time. But also remember, it's a snapshot. It's not for the purpose of a district learning walk. It's not evaluative. So the individuals coming in are not coming in to evaluate the teachers that they've seen. They're not even coming in to make judgments. We're coming in in a way, I'm going to say the way it's supposed to be, because this is my belief and how we're going to stick to it is we're coming in and we're being objective and we're only sharing what we see. Now, when the team is done and the administrator who supports that principal, who works directly with that principal, if there are some other conversations they want to have about what they saw or questions that the principal may say, hey, well, did you actually see this? Those are other conversations that are there, but again, it's not evaluative. And there's a briefing in the beginning of the, the beginning of the walk. So we gather, say like this, a little smaller, but we got, gather collectively and really focus on the principals sharing what their priorities are for the walk. So they want us to look for teacher talk or student talk, the levels of engagement, type of questioning that's going on. Is there proximity, you know, control, so to speak, where are students moving around? Is the adult moving around? And again, what does that level of engagement really look like? So the principals will share what their priorities are. We already have district level priorities, but the district level priorities are to reflect what we want to see in our buildings. So they're not separate. They are, they are similar. However, when we come to a building, there may be other things that they want us to be able to see and feel. Sometimes it could be the climate and that could be when you're going from classroom to classroom in the hallway during passing time, what does that look and feel like? So I share that because there are lots of other areas that are on there. And it also comes down to, I know we use the word glows and grows, but it's about growth. It's about getting better. It's really about, you know, what is that specific criteria? So there is a process. So it's not coming in and it's just, things are shared that have nothing to do with the content that's there. And it's not, it's also not a opportunity, there is an opportunity when we need to speak and share accurately what we're seeing. So it's not about coming in and not sharing things that may need improvement. That's part of the process. But it really is about being objective and not judgmental when you're coming in. Thought I had another. So just going through quickly, this is what we end up seeing. I share some pictures with the board as I do these weekly notes. But again, it's always hard for individuals because you never can get into the buildings all the time. But these are, these are our classrooms. I was pleased when I saw that because that furniture came from Pratt Whitney. So it was good. We thought it wouldn't fit anywhere but the class in the technology area and the tech area at the high school, being able to create another style of seating would sometimes be things not that big of a deal. But it is when we think about our workspaces and for students to be able to have that type of access. So again, we talk about hands-on. I had a video of that, but I'll, I'll spare you when you're driving around. That'll be the next time. So again, just touching again, so the, the visits capture all schools. And like I said, there's anywhere from fifteen to twenty members, the school team, the class is visited. And one big change for this year is that all classrooms are busy. I believe every classroom in a matter of subject is an academic classroom. So whether we're going to art and music, English, whatever it is, if we're going to see students at recess, to me, all of that counts because it speaks to what happens at a school during the day. Everything's a learning opportunity, whether we're doing lunch duty and we come through and we see what's happening there. So I didn't have an official number, but I know we're well over. So we see the number of walks that were done October, November, and then the number of walks that were done recently. So that's about seven hundred. Honestly, that's a low number because it's not counting all of the departmental walks. When they come for the math department, they go and see their classrooms, they team up and they walk around. And again, this is just district. It doesn't include the school-based teams doing their walks. So just to be clear, we're thinking right now in March, individuals probably have seen closer to about five thousand classrooms. So when we're sharing about what's happening in our buildings, my expectation is that our teams are well in tune to what's there. It's not about anyone going in and telling and directing and teaching what to do. No, that's not what it is. But where are we? Because we are, if we're not teaching a class, we are support staff. And when we look at the learning blocks, that's what it's about, seeing what our trends and patterns are. And then it also leans toward, when we're talking during the budget season, we're saying, here are the areas and priorities that we have. But we're speaking from firsthand experience of being able to see what's happening in those classrooms. Any question about?
Learning walks are really powerful. Can you remind me, um, which framework do we use to evaluate teachers? The CCT or the?
I know we redid our CCT.
CCT? So then the learning walks are aligned, are they aligned with the?
So yes, they're aligned. However, like I said, they're not evaluative.
Right.
So we use the domains and all of the, and being from different states, everyone has different names for it. So yeah.
And then like, um, because I think the average number is five per classroom in regards to the groups. Do you guys go in like with clipboard or you guys just?
We, we mix it. Most people go in with a clipboard. I go in and take all my notes in my phone. So I look at it where we all at this point should know what an instruction looks like. And so we have the domains, but yes, we do go in with the clipboards. They break it out by domain and we kind of focus on certain domains.
So you're not using your phone?
It makes it easier when I, when I send the information back, send the information back also. That's why I get all those pictures too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when you guys go into the classrooms, how is that received by folks in the classroom?
It's, it's well received. I think one, they are already used to individuals coming in. And the one thing I try to continue to emphasize and then act like it when you go in is to, I go in and I sit. You know, some of them are taller than I am anyways. I can sit down and you kind of blend in. But you go in where it's not, you don't want to come across as being, you know, when you're standing sometimes. So we try to do those things and, and blend in. But no matter what we do, if we're not delivering the message and it's coming back to the principal where it's non-judgmental and we're there as support and not to look for something that's wrong. And sometimes that takes time, but I think we have already had somewhat of a process in place. But of course, if a new person coming in, it takes a moment to get people to, you know, make sure that that's what we're doing. So that's why we had refined the process this year to have it where, you know, it built up, it was already there. But really having it where we were, we talked about it more and it was, had more individuals on the teams. And we continue to speak the same language and maintain the level of being non-judgmental.
What kind of data are you expecting to come out, like, I understand you've done, like, quite a few of them. What kind of data are you expecting?
So for this, there's a lot more of the anecdotal data because we can do, you know, we have information on benchmark assessments and all the other numerical data that we can see. But it's really about seeing what the trends and patterns are. So again, if we think of something basic like student engagement, how do you define that? We can define it many, many ways because you can walk into a classroom and a student may look disengaged, their head may be down. But you ask them a question, they've been paying attention, they've been writing everything down. So some of it is how do we define what we're looking for? And making sure, you know, it is a, it is a fair process. Or I say that the data piece, having those conversations i- is been a huge part and just being aligned in our thinking and our vocabulary about what we're talking about. Thank you, thank you. And I want to make sure we all remember, that's why I put a little bit later, that it is Women's History Month, which is March. We know that we shouldn't have to designate certain times of the year to make sure we're celebrating and recognizing people all the time. And, but I thought it was worth mentioning in here just in terms of, because it hasn't been around all that long when you think of the actual time period from, let's say nineteen eighty-seven. So again, just as we think about how we recognize, how we support our, our young ladies, you know, I have a daughter. And it's, when you think about having a daughter, then with two sons, it makes you, you know, be more mindful. Uh, when we talk about careers and pathways and those type of things, what are we doing? And especially in the world that we're digging deeply into with AI and the science piece and coding. It can't just be, you know, trendy things to say, okay, well, we want girl, you know, the, you know, girls code. It's like, okay, that's all finding good, but are we really doing it in our classrooms across the board? And why is it something special versus just embedding it and making sure it's something that's part of what we should be doing at all times? And just to highlight a couple of things. So last week we had our America, Read Across America event, which you can see on the left. And then we had a press conference with Governor Lamont. So they never give us much time to prepare for, to prepare for those, but Rauer is going to be good sports. We think it's great that they picked East Hartford to be able to come in. He came in, he signed the bill that is giving another forty million dollars to special education resources. Just to be clear for everyone who's listening, we're not getting the forty million dollars. We get a very, you know, small part of it as we should because it's spread out to lots of different, lots of different communities. But again, I say that because I'm one where I never want to disrupt the school. But Mr. Pierce is great. We knew that, you know, the media center at the East Hartford Middle School would be a great opportunity for them to be there. So they did come, signed the bill. And we also have the chair of, one of the state reps is one of our teachers at Woodland. And she's a chair of the special education committee. So that's a helpful, helpful point as well. And that is all I have this evening.
I have a question in regards to, um, this is the special ed, I was just on my governor Lamont. I know that it's, it's really good that we're initiating these conversations, right? It's a fun special ed. My biggest concern is that although like money is going to come to different municipalities for special ed, well, has there been like any discussion around long-term? Like, this is just like one shot deal. So like, are, like, I'm afraid that they might end up hiring people to support special ed needs, like, and then, you know, when will we wrap? And I know that you probably may not have the answer, but that's always a big question.
Now, and so the question focuses on basically when the grant money comes, how long is it going to last? How are we going to maintain it going into the future? The amount that's coming through this, which I said, it's a great number to hear, that's forty million. But when it's broken out, it's not something that we would do in terms of increasing staffing based on that amount. Yeah. And, and, and the other piece is we continue to, I'm a proponent of getting as many of our children to stay in district that we can serve. Now granted, I've said it before, there, we're not going to be to serve all of our children that have special needs. There are going to be some that they have to go to replacements out. Then that's a best situation for them. But really looking to see what programs can we have within district and reinvest some of that funding that we're sending out. So it's almost where it's, it's never going to be a wash. But instead of asking for more funding, we're retaining some money that we would have otherwise spent because it's already allocated in the budget.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, moving on to new business, are we going to approve our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Head Start selection criteria? Come on down, we'll see. Talk to you tomorrow.
Good evening. It's working. Um, I'm here to seek your board approval for the twenty twenty-five Head Start selection criteria. Um, the Head Start program must annually establish selection criteria that weighs the prioritization of the selection of the participants based on the community needs identified within the community needs assessment um, of the performance standards. And this selection criteria includes public assistance, uh, family income, disability, parental status, employment status, education status and family status. The federal poverty guidelines are also noted on the document for your reference. And the community needs assessment does not warrant any changes to the selection criteria that was established last year during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So last spring, based on the community needs assessment, um, it did not warrant any particular updates. So for this particular twenty twenty-five Head Start selection criteria, it's no different than last year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for?
Uh, just, um, so this, uh, this is the community needs assessments that went out. So I agree with the program. So don't take it wrong, but all this, like here, like, I'm a husband, I'm married, I have two kids. Everything on this selection, like this criteria goes against. Like as a community member, it feels I'm being punished, I'm not successful. But I'm above the poverty guidelines. It feels like I'm being punished for being married, having a kid. I mean, going by here, you get more points that DCF is involved in your life, like.
And, and Matt, you're not wrong. And I know that you and I have had this conversation before and other conversations about the ECLC relative to Head Start. And these are, these are, these are standards that are set forth by Head Start in order for us to be able to receive the funds. And so to your point, yes, um, you know, unfortunately, the more disadvantaged the family is, um, the more points that they receive for eligibility for entry into the actual program. So you're not wrong in what you're saying.
No, it, I know we talked about expanding the program. It's just I think you get more children when you do expand it because you're only allowed a certain number. I just, I just want it eligible for everybody, you know? It shouldn't go off of this criteria in my eyes. I mean, the state fed it above me, but it shouldn't. You know what? The, the parents want their children to learn at four, five years old. We live in East Hartford, we have to learn, right? Just don't agree with this.
I understand. And then, and also to your point regarding Hockenham as a whole, the Head Start funding is really only one source of funding because it is comprised of four total funding sources that don't necessarily go by this particular criteria. This is Head Start specifically. And again, to your point, we have had so many conversations about expanding preschool educational experiences for our three and four-year-olds beyond Hockenham. It's something that I know that our superintendent is very interested in. It would require more conversations in terms of the funding sources that we would have available to be able to expand that beyond Hockenham. But I always appreciate your comments and your questions and your passion around preschool because I know that your little one there is having a good experience.
That I know I'm getting off track and everything, but so true story. So I got my son, my son into racing, you know? Yay. Don't get anybody involved in this. Yay, don't get anybody involved in this one. Yeah, but anyways, he was the only student, mind you, he's in the seminar he's been going. Yesterday, he graduated. The instructor and everybody said, your son's the most well-behaved kid. Mind you, it was four and a half-year-olds to twelve-year-olds. He was listening and everything. I was like, I was like, that was this Cobell, taught him everything. He was focused, he was learning. And I was watching like in the back, he really was. It's amazing like what you guys have done with my son. My daughter, she's still the devil.
Is he still singing?
It's funny, we put an end to that one, trust me. I've heard enough good morning songs.
Thank you for, thank you for, uh, your words are encouraging, man. You're always encouraging us, but, uh, thank you for that, Matt. Oh, with that, Chris, go ahead.
What's the ratio for Head Start to, as far as how many kids do they take for Head Start funding versus like attributable? I guess.
I don't want to give you the wrong figure, so I can definitely get you that information.
First, thanks.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? I don't see that. I have a motion to approve our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Head Start selection criteria. Motion is second, all in favor? All opposed? Speeches, eyes have it, thank you. Uh, that's Tia, come on down for the review and approval of our CT healthy food certification. So we have, uh, we have two certifications that will be approved tonight, uh, so the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm bringing forth two food certifications. First, I'm seeking approval to continue our participation in the National School Lunch Program while ensuring compliance with the Connecticut nutrition standards. This certification encompasses all foods sold to students separate from, for the universal meals. In fiscal year twenty-four, our adherence to the nut, to the nutrition standards yielded seventy-three thousand dollars. And we are committed to maintaining this compliance moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, so first one, any questions before we move on to the next? All right, with that being said, I have a motion to approve our healthy food certification, first item, number two. Motion in a second, all in favor? All opposed? Aaron, none, see it done, eyes have it, thank you, next.
Great, so now I am requesting a waiver approval. Um, this waiver will allow East Hartford Public Schools to sell foods that do not align with the Connecticut nutrition standard. This waiver will be applicable for sales in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or the weekend, the sale at the location of the event, and foods and beverages that are not sold in a vending machine or school store. So concession stand or fundraiser.
Any question? All right, I'll give, uh, the honors to Ms. Vanessa Jenkins and call this motion, this is her baby. So moved. I have a motion in second, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Uh, next, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Esalina Gilzina to the fill the vacancy of Mr. Patrick Biggins as our next core education board member, finishing out his term for F R twenty-five? So I have a motion of a second? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, so here we, uh, the Democratic Party did select a new candidate to fill out, uh, to fill Patrick Biggins' position. She will be sworn in tomorrow at the town clerk's office and she will be here at our next board meeting. And her orientation will be, I believe, March twenty-fourth. Oh, the name is, her name is Esalina Gilzina. Anyone else? Perfect. Are there any comments or questions by board members? Vanessa, please.
Thank you, guess, um, first of all, I just wanted to say that, um, we had a curriculum committee meeting. Uh, my first as chair, and something that came out of that committee is, um, we're hoping that, I was hoping that, when, um, you know, these meetings are public, right? So when anyone who needs to look at minutes from previous meetings, that's specific for this particular meeting or any meeting that has a subcommittee meeting that has proposals attached, that those proposals are attached to the minutes so people can actually see what the votes were for. So I'm, we're working on that, hopefully the, the, the next time, um, you know, because I went to look back to see what the minutes were for the last meeting, which was probably about a year ago. Um, and I saw new courses, but I did not see the proposals attached. It's important to see those proposals, so we're hoping that we can get that attachment. It was a, it was a great, it was a great meeting, I'll have it in that, so.
Thank you, anyone else? Are there any topics for future agendas? They have a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second, all in favor? Eyes have it, thank you. Have a good night, everyone.